Councillor John, Mrs Dee Thompson, Mrs Gail Thompson.
Okay. I return declaration of interest.
And no more to it, Chair.
No thanks. I refrain from asking questions.
No more to it.
I have before short rapported with members requesting consideration of the attachment of Molyneux Academy to the second level of the furniture room.
I'll say that again.
Okay. Everybody up for that? I have tried disposal of... sorry, disposal of equipment outside the facility's management room.
Yeah. The purpose of the report is to request approval from members for the disposal of the listed equipment. The terms there for members to see, the proposal is that the council remove the listed equipment from the asset register and advertise it on a purchase-seeing basis. The proposal is that the advertising equipment in the Northern Echo and Spenny U with the coming due morning available so that prospective buyers can see the equipment prior to their bidding. And the recommendations are that members approve the removal of this from our asset register and agree to the proposal as outlined in the section four of the report. Sorry, just finally, Chair, just for the information, the proposals have been brought up last hour off internal order. It was quite happy because the proposals have been brought forward.
Thanks. Any more comments?
Yes, I have a question now. Do you want to have a written down value on any of this listed equipment? Do we have a written down policy on the property equipment? Is it town policy?
I've all got the topic in there.
All good, we find out, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy with the proposal that the service manager sets out for this report. I think there is an opportunity perhaps further down the line to say whether or not some of this equipment might be worth passing on to some of our lot and sites, but the lot and site authorities. I'm happy with the proposal at the minute, but I think if any of the equipment doesn't get sold through this proposal, it would be a look at doing that certainly in ourself under the members of the County Council. Have used members issued funding to provide such equipment for our lot and sites in the past, it might be worth of funding to give out. I'm with the recommendation, but as for any of them sold, I need to do a turn of this committee so that we can make suggestions based on that.
Why, my honourable Chair, now, specifically about the highest grade football to the... I will give a pass to someone to answer the question.
Yeah. The purpose of the report is to provide members of potential costers in which the commission attempted to provide costers, plans, employees, device rooms, football changing rooms, with related expansion of the mining museum, the potential development. It's basically just to give members heads up on potential costs should this agency be being progressed.
Any more comments? Comments? Well, Councillor Thompson.
Chair, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. First of all, when this was introduced last time, I did ask if there'd been a consultation with the people down by his ring in regards to what they thought the mighty uses for for the change room. For our head club. They haven't had any response from the town council yet, the last communication I had from them said that there'd be no one in contact with them. And that was one of the recommendations that we did approve last time, Chair.
Well, we actually, of course, as well as the making of council, this has helped us go further away, I think, for ten years. And what we want to do, I believe, of course, maintain, and we actually have some concrete shared interest partnerships such as the rest of the highest grade before we actually start the development of that area. So this is the main reason I'm actually having something to present.
If I may, I would only quite understand if you were committed to £4,000 and I would write about the whole thing pretty well sorted out before we committed the money. I mean, for instance, I did ask on the night as well to be added the recommendation that we should have some discussions with the band. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, the room that we're talking about extending the mining using too is in fact the room where the band played. And I still have no notification or any indication whether the band wants to move. And it was stated on the night, there'd be no way would we ask the band to move if we didn't want to. So that's just my concern, we might be going to some sort of, looking to pay £4,000 out where we are. Are you sure we aren't talking with the band, the safety of the weather?
Well, again, you talk about string over town bands, who reference to that to the band, I appreciate what you said about the reference to mine. I'll say again, until such times where you've got something to discuss with the interested parties, it's high risk, high risk at that point. So that's basically the basis of this report, but I think somebody could come, Councillor Thompson. Councillor Darts, you're welcome.
The mining museum is so intended, it's who, where, why, where's the justification? Having enough of a budget and unlocking about the extensions of the mining museum, where's the suggestion from?
A suggestion, as this comes from the regular, the attending of the town members would like the council to actually buy us a new stadium. Again, at the moment, that's all it is.
What's the justification for it, Chair? What's the justification for extending the mining museum? What justifies it? I think, where's the...
I'd say my knowledge is that's a public council, I think it's £7,000 pay or it's distributed from all over the world, completely, there's about a million of them, I think it's more than that.
I'm sorry, Councillor, but isn't just to tell your local manager to extend it, Chair? This is not a budget, it's a...
Well, again, if I may, I appreciate all the comments. These are all the suggestions and make discussions at the moment, not from concrete, as you proposed, as you can say on the report. But I'll play what I said for the third time, that in such times where you've got some suggestion about potential notifications on the basis to any of the sites, whether it's the town hall, highest grade football, it is literally just high risk. So this is the main reason, of course, from the facilities manager, if I'm not put to words, he's still give us something concrete, if I was a better term.
I agree with what I'm saying, which is, I can't remember.
All since the council has asked, you know, like every other... I'm not interested in your talking about this, Chair, but I'll just say, anyway, you met everybody you met in this year that was invited to the week beginning of the calendar year. And part take of discussion around issues that I've mentioned today, Councillor Morrison.
Well, Chair, when the society came up previously, I did say I hadn't attended the meeting at highest grade and following the discussions after that meeting, which then went on to talk about the mining museum. I did say at that time that we should have a full report come back to the council. And I also agree with what Councillor Darts has said, we have no information, we have a comment from Councillor Mcleod, 7,000 people have visited. We need a proper analysis of the number of members that attended. We need a proper analysis of whether or not the succession we had planning for volunteers for the mining museum, what is the future of it. We also need to know exactly what the position is with regard to competition. I have heard that the people in Durham may be looking at mining museum. All of these things need to be presented by this council in a full report. And to us at this stage, for us to agree a recommendation for £2,000 to be spent, I think that is wrong. And on that basis, I will not give up against the...
I'll try, I'll... Councillor, do you want to...
Yeah, yeah, through you, Chair. All I've... this provides with an opportunity to have some drawings and some plans that we can sit down and consult with the relevant stakeholders. Because at this moment in time, for all we know, once we get the drawings and the plans done, that from that point we will be able to identify what any potential costs might be. At this moment in time, we don't know if any cost would be £5,000, £10,000, £10,000 or £80,000. And until we have some drawings and some plans that we can give to a company to provide some potential costs, we can't do that. So we need to do this piece of work to enable progress to be made. And that progress might ultimately be, we do nothing. But we can't make any informed decisions without the facts being available to us at the front end. And that's where we are. It's not about, we're not making decisions at this stage, it's trying to be, put ourselves in a position where we can make informed decisions at the later stage.
Chair, just to come back on that one, as we've already pointed out, the band has been in Jason's room for as long as I've been councillor on this council to 2003. You know, we haven't got any agreement from them to move out of that facility. We should be looking at all of these situations in before we wanted to spending money on plans that may not be actually term into fruition.
Everything is, you know, the previous special council and kind of this study are all fully valid on points to consider, really. I'll say again, until we've actually explored faceability for these things, discussions like our iron elements are fully great. If all the posts that you made about the parties involved to do the... Of course, that way ultimately these members make a proper decision in this chamber to approach those parties. But there's nothing in the bar that I can... I firmly accept what you said, I would agree with, but we're not actually at that point. If we follow the rationale out, we're not going to spend anything or take any form of action to that matter to save these things for faceable. On that basis, if we apply that motion, I would agree with you, I think this is a problem.
I declare a new question, Chair, with the approval of Smith. And if I'm allowed to stay tonight, I need to answer some of these questions. Would you like to accept, obviously, the answer?
Absolutely, thank you, Councillor.
Vice President of the Mining Museum, that's me, interesting. And I don't want to put myself in jeopardy of infringing any council rules. If you're all right, if you're okay, may I speak?
Absolutely, Chair.
If you do mind.
Yeah, the point of the call, yeah, the point of the call. The declaration of interest is obviously individual council itself and not the council's own boss. The council Smith clearly has an interest and it's up to council Smith now to take that interest to protect himself and this organisation, this democratic process. If council Smith feels that this interest is a conflict and may weigh the decision of council more way or another, which would affect council Smith's position on this authority or where these requirements are from. And that is a problem, but a little bit is with the council.
Well, I have a duty of interest, Chair, as a... The vice president of the mining museum, also represent the council board on the... So...
We should just not say for the part of the bank to raise in favour of what's been far as a moving event. But to the sales of the union interest, you know that there is... There's something there. Nice one, Chair. Can I come to the point which I want to speak on? During this process, we increase the capacity of the current planning museum and the other rooms, while making progress in the other walls and planning areas. Now, it is proven to be something that's good for the town because we do get paid for it. So I don't say there's anything wrong with increasing the capacity of that. But if we go off the clothes that people are looking at, we need to do that. You know, that's what it says, it's provenness. And make our party agree, do we pull it down or do we make something of use for it? I think that's worth looking into. I'll sign in favour of it.
That's the basis of the report, I suppose, there, Councillor Darts.
Thank you, Chair. I've been waiting for this day since the beginning of the day regarding this, but I'm happy to wait for council Smith to confirm any comments. What you have already said.
Well, I would like to wait to comment, because I think that might have answered some of these questions.
Well, I would like to have a split to comment if I have to, I would like to say that.
First of all, the fact that about three years ago, the band were using the DITRAT particularly or two rooms. I mean, what did it take long to realise, quite next door, because sometimes you hear the sound of the music coming through, was the bank. And the idea was that if we could extend it there, it would be an ideal opportunity to expand the educational programme which the mining museum has brought. And up to now, we had quite a few visits from school who wanted to extend that to honestly, for the school within the area, being schools and educational type of programme. Now, yes, I spoke to the... I was an individual, I believe, at the plant at the time, when the ring was called, it was in a rush. And it was in the request of the band, because the natural fact that email came in. And what the problem is, that I'm sure today and now, is that if you were mentioning something like what you wanted to do, straight away, two people would jump on the band. They'd say that if they stole the band out, they'd do this, we're going to take over. The first thing that was said to the band was that in no way did the mining museum want to throw the band out. And I'd be with them and they'd put that chat in there. But also was said, they would ask you what you want, where and what kind for. And I'm certain of that. So I kind of understand the problem from that point of view. And I'm sure if they talked to the band members, they really should have said that to them, because the ones we talked to was Michael Johnson, Mr Johnson and Ewing Stigson. But it wasn't just the band, the room for the band, that's not for here. There's also the opportunity, if that wasn't materialised into whatever reason, it could be all to other things, that not that particular building down here. There are other bands at the time, you know? And there's all sorts of things that you wouldn't really be able to... And that was the idea of it. Whereas far as the mining museum, if it was in the woods, it brings a tremendous amount of paper to the town, it brings paper from abroad. I would like to say there's 30% of the 7,000 others come from abroad. Then you've got the rest of it come in and you've got to spread it all to the side. And things that just feel like that, you know? Nothing, you know, nothing... I don't know, I don't know. If you want to see, if you want to see a programme of what the bands do, what the mining museums and the museums do, that would make a difference to what we do with the... I'm thinking, yeah, sorry.
Let's talk a bit about that, Councillor Thompson. Councillor Thompson. I would just like to make a claim, Chair, that I'm opposed to the mining museum. And I said that last week, although I had wanted some communication with the people down by the, who did have a big dress. But my problem is, is that we don't think about any communication from the band. We've got Councillor Smith sort of said he spoke to one or two people, so I... I would like to see the representation of the band come along and say that they'd like to move out.
We'll have to have it cooked eventually, you know?
Yeah, we're coming in money, Chair, and I can't see why, we just cannot have some sort of official communication with the band to say, we will be prepared to look at those down by his ring or by his ring out of the question. But maybe that eventually, we do find a place that's acceptable to the band and therefore the mining museum can only exchange it. All I'm interested in is that I feel as though the band is not being represented. No one's got that, that's all I'm saying. And we're going to spend money, which if the band is saying no, not going to go.
Want to hear comments?
That's not the... that's not the reason, I'm sorry, Chair, that's not the reason, that's the official of the band.
Can I come back, Chair? I've got to say... Chair, council gallery, council by the city, council there, you can have council...
Point of...
Yeah, 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 I read it before the board. Yes, we are discussing development of the highest grade football, you know? Where the hell is the bank to be? That's what's agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I've been waiting for this day quite a long time now, I would like to... I have indicated that the meeting, but I appreciate that a lot of members want to stay on us. Well, let's go back to the basics here, we've got an unused facility down by his ring, which was a football changing room that's still on wheels. What we're looking for here is our options with regards to how we can use that building. And what Councillor Thompson has already said is that we've had, we had contacts on the highest grade visitors before, they were particularly thinking what they were doing with the building. And all the ideas they discussed in that tonight, that were a lot of possible ideas, but it would be the main ground room now there. Right? So there are two ideas there, none of which were mentioned in this report, because this report is not about any of those ideas or any other ideas that might come out of the use of that building. What we're ready to do at the last minute, bring together some plans to change that facility, it would be a large room, but what was it, say, a third facility and a small kitchen. That's a generic space, it's going to be used for any of these ideas that we've got here. But we bring the football changing room, the changing rooms, and it's a generic use for that. Now, with regards to consulting with various people like the band and the like as well, the highest grade at this point, we're certainly not for the horse. We've got, we've got a lot of money we've got to spend in, and what Councillor Darts, we've got, because of the fact that we haven't got any capital money, and this isn't budget before, it's false. We've got £105,000 budgeted in this year's budget for capital projects, which has not all been spent yet. And previous years, we've had £8,000 of capital spent, and I would imagine in the budget for next year, we'll have a similar figure. So there are capital money there, so it's not suffice to say that this isn't budget before. But what we might find from these plans is that the fans come back and say, oh, this has gone across £400,000, £500,000 pounds to do. In which case, we'll have to look at this with caution and say, well, you know, we need to do that, so that not all those ideas on the head. So what would the point be if consulting with the likes of the band and the likes of this chap in highest grade wants to do something? To say, oh, we're going to do this, and they might come back and say, yes, we'd love you to do that, no problem. And then, further down the line, we get, frankly, we've got no money to do in the first place. Now, I think that's going to get certain paper faxed. So what I think we've got to do is put the horse in the yard to get a right position here. Can you just say, oh, it's council medicines that wants to stay, what's that? I'm happy with what's saying, and it's a...
I'll take the third time, Councillor, it's not the council.
What we've got to do, Chair, what we've got to do is put the proposal in place for the full report, which is what Councillor Masterson has, a full report with all the details of what we can be doing with regards to this facility. Now, the way we're aiming to all that facilities managers, that's the best way to go down there, is to get those, you know, in plans. Yes, it's going to cost £2,000 pounds. Okay, so it costs £2,000 pounds to get the drawings and plans to plan out that highest grade changing rooms into this community facility, generic community facility. Yes, it's going to cost £2,000 pounds to get the drawings, to make the mining museum, in respect of, what does it say, to increase the capacity into other rooms. Not necessarily the band room, but into other rooms. And that is part of this process. Now, to consult properly with these people, to quote the band and say to you what to, this has got to be able to show them what we want to do. And we've got to be informed that we've got the money to do it in the first place. So, Chair, this is the only sensible way to do it. We have got the money in place to do this, we may not have the money in place to take it all away, which is why we've got to do this, this duty to exercise. And this will form the full report and analysis that Councillor Masterson and her colleagues are asking us to do. Chair, with that, I move the recommendation to the report.
And your recommendation, Councillor Darts.
The report is headed Development of highest grade football facility. However, on point three, it refers to drawings and plans to increase the capacity of the current mining museum into other rooms, it does say that. However, the previous report, the care of council, was to say the band room, there was discussion about that, because I said at the time that we shouldn't be discussing the band in relation to highest grade pavilion. Again, I would argue, we need to have a proper project analysis before we even consider spending £2,000 on plans for the expansion of the mining museum. We need to know what the competition in the market is. I've heard, as I've said previously, you know, there is indications that Durham may be having a similar function, that will take people away from here. Have we got an analysis of all of that information and the numbers that are coming and expected in the future for spending more mining museum? We need all of that information before we even spend any money.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Darts.
Well, I have, I'm representing one man, Mr Mr Green, I've heard a very bad name of him. And through this, I am scared at the moment. I assure you, I will do my best to make sure it's clear, a concise consultation with the bank committee, that they are with, hopefully are... I'll say again, all of our points, but... Oh, what Councillor Darts has said, we have to...
I don't know, the problem, the 59, it asks for, go ahead, quotations about plans. You've got apples and pears. Two by two, one and two refer to highest grade, which I don't know, the problem is, all it does is mix it up there with the mining museum. Take a walk by all means on one and two, which you tie together. The dog mixes it with the mining museum, does nothing to do with highest grade, the mining museum, must be wrong.
Now, Councillor, what's the other thing?
After the one on each wall, the green spark, the green spark report that we've thrown, there's not some very interesting conversation in the part, and I don't think I've seen the other, the actual report that is included. However, agreeing with the rating of this, if I'm starting, this is the eight, that's the fact, and if we're going to include it, it's still there, taking all the facts into making it. So basically, the report that's included there, one of my... To get a specific decision to make there, I think the sensible way forward is to go along with the twenty. Not making any decisions that are fine, we are concerned on what's included, there's no decision on the ones on the board included. In best of that, I'm not very difficult.
I'll... I'd just like to clarify a position, as I said, the mining museum, council over your kids, which is very wrong, it's being... The mining museum is moving nowhere, other than the Durham and the one, right? And very, very poor contracts, and there's certainly no intensities of them, they don't have any involvement, only support, right? They have no jurisdiction over mining museum. Any decisions made about that mining museum is made by the politicians who run that mining museum, and I have to want to come to those politicians. So please, don't go and say that these roads are coming from Durham and it's going to go through to Durham, that is totally wrong. And the Trump dimension, I don't even want to have told you now, right? You have no reason to say that. I'll try, I'll put a solution, but I don't want to judge for that, I would be...
Now, I'm going to one or two, this is a lot of separate, Chair. I'm going to one or two, treat separately if the vote.
Okay, I will call on that first, I'll... Okay, I'll take a one or two, you may, first, I'll listen to you, if you may.
Chair, what do you want? I'm looking for a clear, is the council suggesting that we put on one and we put on two? Or we suggest that we put on one and two together and then we put on three separately? I have an idea, suggesting we put on one, two, three separately, I'm not clear.
One and two, Chair, together, three separate, because as I said earlier, the mining museum has nothing to do with highest grade, and just one.
So that's here, and I wanted to get it separate from the apples and the pears, I don't know. I was just... And then it falls. I just want to set the chair quality, I'm afraid, there was any additions. I don't think there's any additions there. But I've got a few problems there.
Do you know what, I was, I thought you agreed that I could talk?
talk. No, 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 of course, I was, Chair. Right, and I'll just open it again after third time now. I apologize for all the discussion that had to go off topic, come up to the black and white, or black and white was the day of the, the. But I think today, discussion has been also very important for our conversation. What I think, if I'm related, I remember this one, fellow members, we're in a position where effectively councils like ours will be occurring much of their concerns as we go forward from central government. We are looking at a position where it might be a bit of a, a bit of a conglomity in that we have got, I have the museum's very mentioned, so I've mentioned, I mean, we saw it, a very, very successful volunteer adventure which happens to walk in, out of our five town hall. Against that, we have got a position where facilities like some of our community centers, the football pavilion of Biesbury, as there are being underhoused, in the case of the pavilion playing the mothball. Those underhousings, so caused down mothball facility are still costing a bit, they're spending on money. So in this way, I'm still looking for that here is to review the approximate four thousand pounds of the tax payers will be totally increasing and sustaining the viability of the use of these facility for whatever they decide following consultation with appropriate parties, as we recommend this, with responsible, responsible for administering that project, or to the director, if we can, to just continue, you know, spend tax payers when you have mothball and the use of the stadium. With that, I put that to a one, in favour of giving this one to the board. Once again. I have no further microns on my agenda for the next.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillors, welcome to the seat, we're preparing for community making. And if I'd like to move me, don't worry, Chair, very much. I have more apologies.
Council Jones, Mr De Johnson, Mr De Johnson.
Very much. I have two big ones with interest, non-negotiable, Chair. I have three good questions, non-negotiable, very much. I have a memorial bench. This is a request from when we all began to memorial bench, which decided in Dudley Park, which is obviously one of many places that are beginning to be at memorial benches. As I say, if anybody, if anyone needs any comments, comments, or any requests for the request. We accept the request then.
We accept that, Chair.
I have five, for the services, and we're not supposed to be walking.
Yeah, I do, Chair, the council request, your, your question, considerable request from the lady concerned to purchase back thousands of the pot, that of course, we can cancel in two thousand and ten. Members are recommended to agree with the council, to agree to the purchase and back of the pot, as detailed in the proposal.
Thank you, Chair.
Second, Chair, very much.
I have six, Northwood Hall Centre.
Yeah, through you, Chair, the purpose of the report is just to provide members with an update position, you guys have said that the Northwood Hall Centre, there's an email there from council solicitors, from Swindon Madison, just given us an update, and members are just recommended to note the current position and agree to the town council writing back to the citizens requesting that progress be made in the Northwood Hall Centre.
Council Darts. Thank you, Chair, I'm very glad that this is the report.
Second, Chair.
How did this make it tonight? It's, it's one, I'm just here tonight, and I'm, 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 it's to do with the, 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 the garden. And, yeah, through you, the purpose of the report, to, to members of council, a recent letter received from John Constable, and use the community art, and obviously the cost, and volunteer currently using the garden, that the making a health, just the constable, the individual community volunteers, after they've been very good supported by the proposals that have been put forward. And members are recommended to agree the proposals as an applying section to all the report, and then they can progress on this.
Thank you, Chair, I'm very pleased to say that this man has moved on, you've also community garden, and we've been on your way down, the vice chair, and we're there, but we're here now. And I thank you all for the work you've done in trying to increase the use of the garden of town. And I'm pleased to say that we're finding a lot of community who have been, and there was a lot of being, saying some good things happened to the, to what is a very good facility that we've got in our town. With that, Chair, I would like to move the recommendations of the report.
Yes, but, yeah, this is a great report, and also I know that the John Constable will closely monitor the people that go onto this site. And that is some of the work of council that we've got out there, it's a very good idea.
So we'd like to make sure that all of us get this minute, so.
Great, so we have, of course, a big chat.
Very much. I just wanted to give you all a little Christmas and a present. What would you like?
Now, the meeting's closed, it's the final of the year, it's the council Sunday afternoon, her, her, to meet here, in the chair with a coffee, about half past two, yeah, everybody wants to come, so.
Thank you, Chair.
All council, don't forget, Mr Johnsons.